2012 meeting in the Frankford City Board of Commissioners to order. Clerk, please follow.
Commissioner Wilder.
Here.
Commissioner Heather.
Here.
Commissioner Turner. Commissioner May.
Here.
Mayor Abraham.
Thank you. Our first order of business is citizen comments. This is a regular meeting. So anybody's welcome to bring up any subject they want to discuss. We just ask that folks limit their comments to five minutes or less. Anybody have anything they want to say?
This section where I would...
Yeah.
Bring this up.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
So I have a letter here to the city commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. Skip Hunt. 392 Lindsay Avenue, Frankford. Just to summarize what it says, the letter is, which makes reference to planning and building codes notice a violation on, there are two points covered and one of them has been dealt with or is being dealt with. The other is under the section 302.8, storage of household appliances or non-outdoor furniture. And my request is that that ordinance be looked at to clarify that it seems to address a situation of storage of, of non-outdoor items or household items outside, in the exterior of the property. But that, that section of ordinance was, or of code, was applied to a situation of a, of a recliner chair on the porch. And that item is not stored, it's regularly used. And we are just asking that the ordinance be looked at in terms of reviewing it for clarification that the intent of it is to address outdoor storage of non-outdoor furniture items and appliances. And the, kind of the image that conjures up in your mind when you read that ordinance is, you know, some big pile of set, you know, indoor stuff that's, somebody has stored outside the property, and that's not what's going on here. It's strictly a case of a, of a chair being used on a porch. And driving around town, you see lots of cases where there are items of indoor seating appliances, chairs, and various things on people's porches. And we're just looking for some clarification on that point so that we can keep the chair on the porch for the, for the tenants' use.
That's all. Okay. Thanks, Skip. I'm happy to discuss this a little further when we get to new business.
Okay, thanks.
We don't, we obviously don't have a full, full commission here today. We've got a bare minimum of quorum. So I don't think we'll be able to have very substantive discussion on, on many subjects, but we can at least approach the, the topic. Anyone else? Okay. Next, we'll move on to discussion of tentative agenda. If anybody has any questions or concerns about the draft agenda that came out?
I don't.
Nope. Yeah. Anybody? Well, we can move on to city manager report and staff comments. Take a role.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First, I'd like to announce and remind everyone that the Frankford City Commission will have a joint session with the Franklin County Fiscal Court on July 16 at 12:30 at the Paul Sawyer Library. And the purpose of this joint meeting will be to hear a report of the stormwater feasibility study our consultant URS. And next, we'll have staff reports. Carol Atha for sewer. You have any report, Carol?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson? Please come forward.
Just a little bit of information regarding the bid process that we spoke about the end of March. We bid the police and fire pension fund out to the local banks, and we had approximately six bidders bid on that during that process. We then, I formed the, several months ago, a finance committee to discuss issues that would come up during the year about finance, in the finance department. So we utilized that committee to develop questions and go back and, and talk to the bidders that bid on the, during the process to clarify some of the information that they've given us. So at that point, we, we held a conference call with, with five of the, the top prospects. One of them had some other issues, and we disregarded that bid. But the conclusion was that we selected a community trust as our, as our trustee for the police firefighters pension fund. So you'll have that in your pocket, but I just want to let you know how the process went. We're in the process of working with Rob on the contract right now. Just, just FYI for you.
Steve.
Thank you.
I guess it's, I guess it's too early to, to, too early to tell where we, exactly where we closed out the fiscal year?
Yeah, it's, we're about five days off, maybe, maybe by the middle of this week. What I thought I would do is, if we get, close by the middle of this week, I'll submit an email to the city manager, and he can forward that on to you guys, and then we can discuss. I know you're concerned about the fund, the funding for the, for some of the budget items, so I'll, I'll forward that information as soon as we get closed, but it's, it's still a little bit too early.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief Posits, you have a fire report? Mr. Hackbart?
Just a quick update on three, three items. First, we've been researching other communities on traffic calming policies, and we're going to come together as a traffic committee and prepare something as a draft to bring you all in a future meeting. So I just want to let you know we're currently working on that, that topic. Second item, request adding Schinkel sidewalk contract to the July agenda. We're negotiating with the engineering firm right now, so we'd like to place that item on the July agenda. And finally, contacted David Moses with the transportation cabinet, and we're getting something ready for the downtown traffic study that's funded by the state. So we're, he's going to get back with us when we're ready to start meeting on that, on that issue. So finally got ahold of those folks.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief Willhort, you have a police report?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Donahue, HR. Mr. Parrish, Parks.
Have two just quick items, just for your all's information. The 4th of July fireworks at Capital View went off very smoothly, and very much thanks to the police department, fire department, public works, and the BFW shot the fireworks, and we fed over 400 veterans and their family at the, at the fireworks, which is a very big success without any problems, so. Secondly, it's time, we've been talking about it for five, five and a half years, the Coe Spring Stream Restoration Project is sitting to begin. We had a meeting with Fish and Wildlife, and they expect the contractor to mobilize the end of July, give or take a week, might be early, a little bit earlier, a little bit late, but EcoGrow out of Lexington will be moving in, and they have a year to finish the project. And Biohabitats will be placing signage at the property to notify the public. So just in case someone calls you or asks, it's getting ready to happen at Coe Spring, the stream restoration. And the physical impact to the city will be zero.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Mr. Mueller, you have anything from planning and code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rippey, you have anything, technology?
No.
That concludes our reports.
Thanks, Peter. Next, we'll move on to old business. You might have anything to bring up?
Well, I was just, if I may.
Please.
With the fireworks, with the new ordinance, Chief Posits, and did that seem to do okay? Did it seem to, seem like we have less calls? I know the county still had other fireworks, but...
Yes, we did have a few less. You may have read the newspaper article today. Last year, for the same period from July 1st through the 5th, we had, we had 107 complaints called in by citizens. This year, we had 80, so it was down a little bit. We actually had three very small fires that we contributed directly to fireworks, no, no property damage. One was a grass fire started from fireworks that burned up a section of fence. That was a little bit of property damage. And then two other rubbish pile fires caused by fireworks. So we were very fortunate that we didn't have anything major, such as Lexington. They had an actual entire house loss due to, due to fireworks that found a determined. There were several major incidents around the country. So again, we were very fortunate that we didn't have a lot.
Right.
There were a lot of fireworks going off, the illegal stuff, but as we pointed out, when we adopted the ordinance, it's just very, very difficult to enforce it. I went out on a few complaints myself and advised people of what was legal and what wasn't. But I would have been running 24 hours a day if I tried to keep up with all of them, so...
Right. Do you think there's any education or outreach we should do within the next year to, in order to get to next year?
I think so, and actually, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get into any detail tonight, but I think we may need to maybe tweak the ordinance even a little bit.
Okay.
So I'll be bringing that back to you after I discuss it with Mr. Moore.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
I guess I'll just note that I'd say a 25% decrease is, is not bad considering the fact that we didn't have a, a mirror in ordinance in the county. Anything else?
Not under old.
I've got one piece of old business. The, two, two or three years ago, the Ethics Board announced that they had a report they wanted to make to the city commission regarding, well, we don't really know what it's regarding. But our understanding is that they've delayed making that report until the ethics case in front of them was wrapped up. And it, it appears that that case has been settled and closed, closed out, I guess unless it's appealed again. But I was hoping we could direct the city manager to follow up with them to see if they're ready to, to make that report to us.
Okay.
Glad to do this.
Thank you. That's all I've got. New business?
I have one piece of new business. I wish the rest of the commission was here, maybe we can bring it up at another time, but...
Sure.
There's lots of, and it was in the paper on Sunday as well, but wondering if we could get in touch with more neighborhood associations regarding dog mitts that could be put out to help people pick up their dog leavings in people's yards, which is a violation to an ordinance. But if neighborhood associations would like to maybe, I don't know if this is the route, but just my idea would be that maybe we could outreach to all the neighborhood association presidents and see if anyone in their neighborhood would like to have a mitt station put in, or if anyone would like to have one in their yard, that we could, as a city, help them get one. And if we want to add this to another discussion item for another agenda, we can do that as well to get other commissioners' thoughts or even citizen comments regarding the issue.
I'd be happy to, to discuss this when we have the, the full commission. It might, if we're going to do that, it might be a good idea to go ahead and ask Rob to do some research or be prepared to give us an opinion on whether or not we even could put something like that in somebody's yard. Because I don't know if that would count as a private property enhancement.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of outside of our bounds. Would it be good to know?
Dog mitts, eh?
They have the stations where you can, you can see them on, the parks department has some throughout the town on their walk paths that have little plastic bags.
To pick it up.
I will certainly take a look at that. It might be something where we could put it in the right of way.
Uh-huh.
And do it that way, but I will definitely check into it. And do y'all want to discuss it in the August work session?
I'm good with that, if, if other commissioners are agreeable to.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
I've got a couple of pieces then, one in regards to Mr. Hunt's concern. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but it, I'd say your concern is simply that you've been cited for having a recliner on the porch of a, of a rental property.
Right.
And I understand that to be a violation of our current ordinances, which says that you can't store indoor furniture on the porch. Is that a correct understanding, Gary?
The actual ordinance is placed or stored.
Placed, okay.
And we define what non-outdoor furniture is. That was a change the city commission made in 2007, 2008 specifically.
For my money, that's something I'd be happy to revisit. I mean, I understand there's probably folks who feel differently, but across the board, I, I don't, I really don't have a problem with folks keeping recliners or, well, recliners on their porch. I mean, it's, there's nothing we can do within the context of the, you know, within the context of your situation.
Right.
But that's an ordinance I'd be happy to revisit.
And the basis of the request was, even though the word placed is in that code, the title, the title of the code is specific to storage of items. And so I took that, and reading, you know, taking, taking it all in context, or looking at the whole, all the language in that code, it seems to be aimed at outdoor storage, which is, and you can imagine situations where that would really be a problem, but that's not the case here. It's something that is actually being used on a regular basis and not stored.
I mean, I think that's only fair, across the board, I, I'm inclined to, to give people a little more leeway and freedom in terms of doing things that don't hurt their, as long as you're not hurting anybody. But again, that, that's something we're probably, we're talking about in ordinance, that's something we probably need to discuss as a full commission, but would anybody have any objection to, to discussing this in August as well? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Only other piece of new business, and again, this might just, just have to be another agreement to get something on it, on a discussion for, for August, but we, we had a couple of requests to take another look at, I know this has been looked at before. But the intersection of Wilkinson and Broadway, there's been a request for a four-way stop And I've, I've seen a number of problems at that intersection as well. I believe we had a study on that yet. Please.
We, the, the staff also received an email about this, and we referred it to our traffic committee, and the, a traffic committee administratively decided to reestablish the four-way stop.
Oh, great.
Chief, or does anyone want to speak to it, or we just after reviewing it, thought it was an administrative decision?
That's great. I know that was going to the traffic committee, but, well, is there any objection to that?
It's a good idea.
Great.
And of course, you know, like many of our other decisions on traffic flow, if it doesn't work out, then we can revisit it, but we thought we'd go ahead and reestablish it.
Thanks, Fred.
And traffic committees.
And thank you, traffic committee. Well, then we're on to discussion items. The first one is a future plan for East Frankfurt Pool.
Of course, the, East Frankfurt Swimming Pool has been out of commission for quite a while, and our insurance carrier has pointed out that it may even be a liability issue if it holds water and a child happened to be able to get in, pass the fence and got into the pool. It'd be a liability for the city. And beyond that, we've discussed at, at some time, the possibility of filling in the pool. There's also the possibility of jackhammering or, or destroying the base of the pool itself, the bed of the pool. And then there's even been discussion of the possibility of the long-term use of that area, and whether or not, if we filled in the pool, would we want to do it up to the standards that would allow for that area to be built upon in the future. And so based on those discussions, Mr. Hackbart has talked to some professionals who do this kind of work, and we are able to do whatever option that the commission would like to choose. One, one thing that we would need to do, if we chose to fill the pool in to the standards that would allow for it to be built on in the future, we would have to have a professional certify that the fill is of the size and grade and type that would allow it to be built upon in the future. So we've looked at several of those options, and Tom, Bradley, would you come forward, please? In Jim?
Yeah, I met with, with a contractor who, we talked about taking the, the surrounding area that's concrete and crushing it and putting it into the pool area itself. So we crushed it down to about gravel size and kind of recycled that, that surrounding area that was for seating, bust up the bottom of the pool and put that in there. That kind of a fill will allow you in the future, if you want to use that for a building or something of that nature, that you've got a good, solid base. You could just fill it with chunks of concrete and dirt, but when it comes time, if you ever want to use that area to build on, that's going to be problematic. So at this point, it looks like it probably makes more sense to, to use some of the, the concrete there and grind it up and put it in there. It's just, in the future, if it's, if the commission decides that, that a building or something of that type can go there, then you have a better, better base.
A couple of questions. I guess the first question is, what's the difference in the fiscal impact between the two?
How much is it going to cost to do it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm getting, I'm limited on getting prices from alternative contractors, so I don't really want to say right now what Contractor A priced it as, because that would be unfair.
Right.
I think that what we'll have to do is compare what it would take in the long run, is if we did come back and look at building something there, taking all that back out and re-engineering and putting it in, compacting it, versus, you know, taking the time to do it right now.
Sure.
And that's kind of one of the things that we, we looked at on the carpenter farm was, you know, we kind of dumped out there, and then when it comes time to build out there, they're trying to move some stuff around, and we'd like to avoid that in the future. So I, I'd like to get to other pricing before I give you a definitive number.
Okay. I guess I, I will say that, this is my opinion, but I think it's always wise to, to plan for the long term. If we just fill it with large chunks of concrete, then we're in essence giving up on the space.
Right.
Indefinitely, which I'd be loathe to do, but it'll be good to see the numbers.
And we could fill it with stone from the quarry, but we'd rather use the, the surrounding concrete and maybe some sidewalk that we take out.
Okay, that was my other question.
Some of our projects.
So it's still utilize the sidewalk that's coming up off of Myrtle Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so we would stockpile it there, and then when they come in to grind it up, they'd do it all, do it all once.
Great.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Are you finished?
Shoot, if you have any questions, please.
For me, I personally think it makes more sense to go ahead and get, I guess the right term would be a certifiably broken-up concrete. So that way that, I personally think East Frankfurt, that area could be a great place for, for an indoor facility if it's done right. I mean, infrastructure's already there. There's already sewer lines and water lines for bathrooms, concession stands. If you were to put in an indoor soccer area or even just a multi-use place, it would make sense to go ahead and get it certified, filled in, and then we can just build over top of it as, as we're able and as, as a community to discuss and decide what the community needs. So I said, you know, no matter what the cost, I say let's go ahead and do certified.
I guess I do have one more question. It seems that we've got three options on the table. One is to fill it with large chunks of stuff, which is probably the easiest way to fill it right now, but that kind of shuts the door on future use of the space, or at least makes it cost prohibitive. The other is to do a, I guess what you would call a foundation grade fill, and the other is to not fill it. Is that, which kind of leaves the door even more open to future development, but is that, is that realistic, or is that, in terms of what that would do to our insurance? Is that just really inadvisable?
I think you can speak to that better.
Well, I think Kentucky League of Cities was down last week and inspected our sites, and that, that is one of their main concerns, not just for the Parks Department, but for the whole city, the liability of the pool. They keep asking about it. We, we have it locked and fenced and no trespassing signs, but that is an option, but I, that's, it's going to have to be addressed in the near future. But also, I'd like to add that I agree with both you, Commissioner Wilder, and that we ought to plan for the long term, whether it's 10 years or what, and do, do it right and, and, you know, have the geotech make sure we don't have voids and stuff to, to do that. Would be my recommendation.
The only other option to avoid liability, if you wanted to, just for a short-term basis until you made a decision what to do with the property, is you could just fill it with dirt. And of course, the dirt could be removed easily in the future, depending on what you wanted to do, but, you know, certainly building with the gravel, the crushed stone would provide a good building base if that's what you're, if that's the, what the city's going to use it right before the future.
Is there anything you need from us today?
No, I think, I think we just need to go forward and get the alternative pricing, and then we can come back and, and present you with actual numbers.
Great.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to let you know we are in progress, and we'll come back to the commission with firm numbers and stuff.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
The next item is a, a request for sidewalks in Silver Lake subdivision. And, uh, Mr. Hackbart, could you come forward? You've done some work on this.
This is an exhibit, just for reference, of Equestrian Way. To kind of explain, uh, how to give everybody.
You already seen this yet?
Yes. The, uh, the city adopted a policy probably two years ago that we took over the maintenance of all the city sidewalks. And in the sidewalk policy, the policy kind of prioritized how the city would move forward on maintaining sidewalks within the right of way. And priority one is to maintain our existing sidewalks first. Priority two would be to connect sidewalks where there are segments that get, there are gaps, like in this, um, in Silver Lake, there's many gaps where there's not a handicap ramp at the end of a sidewalk or in the case of Equestrian Way, there's actual gaps where one block has sidewalk, the next block does not have any sidewalk, the next block has half a sidewalk. So, um, I guess the question is, under the policy, staff doesn't have the, the authority to go to priority two until we get priority one work done first. So, I guess up for discussion is do, does the city commission want to re-prior, direct staff to do, uh, connections in Silver Lake over priority one work?
Good. A couple of questions, uh, and I know we talked about this not too long ago, but can you give us a refresher on, uh, what's remaining on the priority one list, which is sidewalks that are in a kind of dangerous state of disrepair?
What's left to do in terms of the, we did an inventory approximately a year ago and identified all the bad sections of sidewalks throughout the city. And I would say we are probably 20% in into identifying and correcting all the existing sidewalks. Um, this, this summer, we have two more projects on Schinkel. Well, that's, excuse me, on, uh, Sunset, Myrtle Avenue, and a quadrant of South Frankfurt that we're going to hope to finish this summer. But that'll probably put us at about 20, 25% of the way through the, the existing sidewalks.
And the ones that we worked on so far, the ones on that list, I would agree, are, uh, rather hazardly. On top of your head, can you give us an idea of what, in terms of really bad sections are, is, is still out there?
Well, there's, how much is really bad?
Because it's, I mean, not all bad sidewalk is created equal, obviously.
It's a lot of little, small, like toe trippers, handicap ramps. Those are the focus points, I guess, is what we're trying to do. And there's, I think there was 1,600, uh, locations identified that needed, needed addressed. And so there's a lot of small little segments that we've been grinding down with mechanical means. Um, and when we can't grind it, it just needs to be taken out and repaired. There's still probably 1,600 spots within the city to, to identify and fix or missing handicap ramps or what, what have you. So, you know, we're working towards getting all the existing fixed as a priority one. But yet you all have the authority to redirect us to look at connecting places like in Silver Lake. And they're all over town. A lot of subdivisions don't have sidewalks. So I guess the, the caution is, if we start, um, doing level two work, priority two work, you're going, you're going to get more and more neighborhoods coming in to talk and ask if they could be prior, moved up to priority level as well. And that kind of takes priority one work and kind of puts it on the back burner potentially. So that's kind of the caution.
Um.
So it's all important, you know, every, this, this is a worthwhile project. The Equestrian Way project is definitely a worthwhile project. It's just a matter of timing of when do you address that?
And I know Rebecca's not here. Would this also qualify under the grants of Safe Routes to School? To help?
In Equestrian Way?
With Franklin County being across the street in the middle school?
I think those are more adjacent to the school. I, I'm not saying that this is not, but we have so many neighborhoods without any sidewalk.
Right.
There is, every elementary school in the city limits pretty much doesn't have any sidewalks.
Right.
Sidewalks are in need everywhere. So I guess, given that, we're trying to prioritize how we tackle the project. And I guess the thought was we would tackle the, maintaining our existing sidewalk first. And then we would go to new construction.
What limits our ability to do more of this work at once? Is it man-hours or is it funding?
I would say funding. You know, how kind of we've scheduled the funding is we get around $600,000 a year in, uh, gas tax money in this play. And we spend about three, 300 to 350,000 in resurfacing and 300 or so in sidewalk repair. So that's kind of how we budget our work. So we kind of keep our, whatever we have in the account, we kind of leave our principal and kind of in there for emergencies. If we have an emergency road failure, we have some money to go in and fix it. So we kind of hate to go in and totally deplete that account because if we have a landslide or some, uh, some storm event that takes a road out, we want to have that ability to go back in and fix it.
Sure. And I, I understand that. We have.
I think we need all the commissioners in order to decide what to prioritize, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we.
I mean, to me, it kind of already shows that it's a semi-existing sidewalk structure. Of which there's a lot of families that live in that neighborhood as well. Kids walking back and forth, I'm, I'm guessing probably to and from practices.
And it's not only in this section of Silver Lake, it's in the, the Silver Lake Two section.
Right.
There's a lot of gaps in that sidewalk neighborhood as well because of the drainage. It's, it doesn't have curb and gutter and you have, uh, open ditches. And where you've got a deep ditch, they stop the sidewalk. And so sidewalk kind of leads to a hole in a lot of cases. So there's a lot of, and when I say a lot, there are many circumstances. But Equestrian is a, a larger segment of the, it's got probably almost 800, 900 feet of sidewalk to make the whole street accessible, where the other streets are just smaller segments of sidewalk, sidewalk that are missing.
How much do you think Equestrian Way would cost? I assume we're just talking about these two sections?
I think it's just this.
Oh, even just this one section?
That's what this one's for, it's just this section.
We've got a unit price contract with the sidewalk company. I believe it's $25 a foot.
And they don't, they want it on this side, that side, they don't care.
So I think we're missing about 1,000 feet on Equestrian Way alone. So it'd be $25,000 ballpark. If, if not a lot of drainage work has to go in as well.
Well, so the, okay, then I guess I'm unclear, because this section right here is closer to, that's not even 300 or that's maybe about 300? So we're talking about more than just the?
This section is 570 feet.
Oh, so you're talking about doing?
This section is.
This whole side of the road?
650 feet.
Uh-huh.
This segment is 570 feet. So we're missing this whole block. This part of the block.
Right.
And then this, it kind of zigzags. You've got sidewalk on this side.
Uh-huh, sure. But a zigzag is better than?
So depending on, if you want to make one consistent sidewalk on one side of the road, you could add linear footage to the project.
I mean, for now, I'm happy, you know, I, I think the zigzagging is good enough, having a sidewalk on at least one side of the road. My take on this, and I think we do need to discuss this with the full, with the full commission. My take is we've, you know, we've got pretty healthy reserves that we keep set aside in the event of emergencies, like the emergencies you're describing. Saying as long as we're maintaining those healthy reserves, I'd be in favor of going ahead and spending more municipal aid money on municipal aid. Our municipal, municipal aid fund is, off the top of my head, what, what is it, one and a half million? More, more or less? Two point, two and a half million.
One other item, Tom just recommended, remembered. In the policy for priority two projects such as this, if, uh, the neighborhood always has the option of city paying the concrete and the.
Sure.
Homeowners pay the labor to have the con, the sidewalk installed. That's, that's always an option in the policy.
And that's roughly a 50-50 split in terms of total cost?
I would say the labor's probably more expensive than the concrete. Probably 60-40.
Okay. So it would cost the neighborhood? 13, 14,000 dollars?
I guess the, just to, to point out that the petition itself right here is just for the 1,200 block of the Equestrian Way, not for all of the neighborhood. We got it last week, um, or not last week, the week before at our voting meeting. This was given out, asking if this could be discussed at this meeting. It was in your mailbox.
And which block is?
Which is right here.
Which is just that stretch right there?
Uh-huh, the 1,200 aspect. Which is all this petition itself is really asking for. It's not asking for the entire neighborhood.
About 300 feet.
Uh-huh. And they're here as well.
Yeah.
If, if they want to speak, I'm fine with hearing them, anyone who, who would like to speak about it, but.
So we're talking about an $8,000 project?
Right. Which?
They would come out of, they wouldn't come out of the city's, uh, what we call the general fund reserves, but it would come out of municipal aid. Again, I, I mean, I agree, some of the sidewalks in this neighborhood are pretty silly. I mean, some of them just end halfway down the block like this one. Some of them end in drainage ditches. It's a very difficult neighborhood to get around in in this way. Just, just feeling that one gap would connect all of these folks via sidewalk out to, uh, Main Street. And out to the high school. So again, I mean, I mean, I'm, I would be in favor of honoring that petition.
As would I, but I think the, the whole commission should be.
I agree. Well, I was going to ask, well, both of us can ask questions when we get everybody together. Okay. I was going to ask a question, we'll just. Is this? Uh, is this something, would there be any objection to adding this to our next agenda? We can discuss this after the joint meeting, can?
I'm fine with it.
Any objection to that? We'll, we'll pick this up again then in a week when we have the full, the full commission on hand. If, if you guys have a comment, we're pretty, being pretty informal today, so. But we would ask you to step up to the podium and identify yourself.
Well, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak or not, because I'm not the one that did the petition. I'm just in favor of the petition.
You're allowed.
We should ask you to keep it.
I will.
Relatively short.
My name is Donna Grimes and, um, I recently purchased a lot in Silver Lake. It's at the, the dead end of Winter Circle, which, uh, comes back out onto Equestrian, where these two properties are that we're asking for support for. The only thing I would like to mention is, yes, we understand the importance of priority one projects over priority two. We're not asking, although we'd love to have every sidewalk in Silver Lake taken care of, we understand that they are priority two. The thing I ask you all to remember is that these two areas that they're wanting done, just did not get completed to end the cul-de-sac area, which then would zigzag and take you to the other side where there is a sidewalk. So when people are walking in the neighborhood, which there's lots of children that walk to school, that use these sidewalks, they're coming down and then all of a sudden, bam, they're hitting yards. And they're trying to walk from their yard back out onto the street to get on a, a paved area. And this is the main thoroughfare that goes through the subdivision to connect the phase one and two.
Sure.
So I ask you all to, if you can't do anything else financially, to please support getting these two sections done so that it completes that sidewalk to allow children to go across the road to get to the other sidewalk.
Thank you.
Shoot.
My name is Richard Wilson. I live at 1214 Equestrian Way. And I have the potential to be one of the homeowners that sidewalk would affect. If, if the purpose of a sidewalk is to separate pedestrians and traffic, then, and, and I understand, given the limited amount of funds, and if this is truly about, uh, serving the highest number of pedestrians, it seems to me that a more logical place that money would be, would be better spent is at a place like between Georgetown Road and the link that's missing at Stevens. Okay? Because currently you've already got a traffic light at this location. You've got crosswalk at this location. It is signaled for pedestrians to cross. And when they cross at this, at this spot and they want to continue from the north to the south with, into Silver Lake or the Woodland subdivision, there is no sidewalk. So if you're talking about schoolchildren and where they're actually, where you're going to see the highest concentration of migrant, of, of movement, it's in this location. All right? Uh, I don't know, does your picture get that far down, Jeff?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. But that would seem to me that that would become a higher priority than coming back into the Silver Lake area. A second problem with Silver Lake, when you look at this and, and whenever you decide to do that, is a crossing that, as it's currently laid out to go from one side of the street to the other side of the street is in the middle of a block. Driver expectation is that you're going to run into pedestrian crossings at crossover streets, not in the middle of the block. As we witnessed last week down here on High Street, when another pedestrian was hit in a crossing in front of the old State Office Building in an area that is not at a signal, a signalized light. And you put up all the signs you like and all that, but driver expectation is they're going to find pedestrians where there's signals or where there's cross streets. So when you look at, if you elect to look at this site, moving this along in the, in the same fashion that it exists on the south side and crossing at, uh, down at, at the next, at the next crossover street, makes more logical sense to keep pedestrians and the traffic separated. The other thing is if you cross in the middle of the street, you've got a crossing here and then you've got a crossing at a side street. So there's two opportunities to mix pedestrians and cars. If you go down to the crosswalk and you cross at that location, then you can actually use a diagonal crossover at that point. And that way pedestrians are only exposed one time, not twice, in that location. The other thing about this is this affects three property, or, uh, three properties and potentially a fourth on the north side of this. It affects two properties when you go to the south. When these have, when, since the sidewalks were not constructed, when the subdivision was expanded. was expanded, setbacks here on the north side are closer to the street than they are on the south side. And as such, when using the existing template that's in there in the neighborhood right now, across the street on Equestrian, you come out with about 12, 12 and a half feet from the edge of the street to the back of the sidewalk. That's how far this thing would come into yards as such. And I can only speak to my particular situation, that's a third of my front yard that just got into public, into the public use, all right? The other problem that you've got is the, is that it does affect fire hydrant. It also affects a water meter that serves myself and my neighbor next door to this, and there are a number of drop outlets that it would affect. It would also require some sort of ditching, ditching because currently the, the surface runoff is into the yards on the north side of the street, and water percolates into the ground surface itself. If this, if this is no longer allowed to happen, as it currently does, then you're going to have to build some sort of a drainage structure at the end of this to get the water into the drainage between myself and the neighbor next door. And as Mr. Hackmark can tell you, we've already got a little bit of a drainage problem back there. They've had to work on several times with overflow water. My, the, you know, there are a number of other concerns that there are, but if you, the major one is, when you look at this, if you decide to consider it, look at it very carefully about where you ultimately end up putting it in this location. And more logically, look at where this is going to serve the highest number of pedestrians. The Stevens Road is one example. The other one where you have a similar situation is at the entrance to Silver Lake. It's signed with a, with a crosswalk, it has crossbars, it, or it has the walking symbols where you can, you know, hit it and it'll tell you to walk across the street and that sort of thing. There are no sidewalks at that location either. And again, that goes back for kids that would be going to Silver Lake Two as well. Both of these locations have higher pedestrian volumes, and then, then you have further back in the subdivision. So, it would stand to reason that that, that that should enter into this equation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me?
I said, thank you.
Did you get a name for the record on that?
Richard Wilson.
Richard Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Well, without any other comments, I guess we're ready to move on to the next. The next item on the agenda. We'll, we'll just pick this discussion up again in a week. Our next meeting is, is in the middle of the day, so our next meeting is at 12:30 at the library, Assistant Manager said.
What date is that?
It's a Monday?
Sixteenth. On the sixteenth. Yeah. And we'll be discussing some other stuff first, this will be at the end of the agenda.
We just need clarification. That was a special meeting for the stormwater presentation? Do you want to add this to our, would we want to adjourn that meeting and then have another special meeting just for the city?
I thought in the past, we've, we've just added items to the, to the agenda in the counties. Because we each, we each have to call our own special meetings. Yeah, we just recessed.
We recess.
Yeah, we just recessed.
Central C out of that one.
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone?
Okay.
The next discussion item is about Franklin County Green Vision, which is a coalition which has been meeting for more than a year here in Frankfurt. And the city commission passed a resolution to support the formation of a permanent Green Vision Commission. And then in the June meeting of Green Vision, the group called for community partners to name representatives to form the new commission and identified three key partners. They identified the Frankfurt Plant Board, the City of Frankfurt, and Franklin County Fiscal Court as key partners of the coalition, and designated that, that those three key partners should have two representatives each on the Green Vision Commission. So, the, it's my understanding that the Frankfurt Plant Board and the Franklin County Fiscal Court have already appointed their two members, and the Green Vision would like us, as the city commission, to go ahead and name our two members. And the goal of this organization is to develop a plan for our county in partnership with Bluegrass Tomorrow that will lead to a better, cleaner, more sustainable, and more energy-efficient bluegrass region and support green collar jobs. So, that was for discussion tonight, the appointment of two members from the City of Frankfurt, to represent the City of Frankfurt.
So, the, the two county folks who have been going to the meetings, or the two folks they chose to appoint, which are Larry Perkins, who's one of the magistrates, and Greg Butler, who's their solid waste administrator. Fred and I have been making it to a lot of the meetings, so I'd be happy to, to keep doing it. I'd be, if anybody else wants to do it, I'd be very happy to see that happen as well. But I think Fred's certainly an excellent representative for the city. Would, I mean, would you mind continuing to do that, or would you...
I don't mind, but they were asking for representatives that had, you know, maybe more technical skills than I do in this area. And I mentioned it to a couple of our engineers on staff, and they said they were willing to do it if, if the commission wanted to consider them. I certainly support it and would continue supporting it.
Pretty open a suggestion. I don't think, I mean, I don't think we can make an appointment today anyway, but probably be a good idea for us to figure out who we're going to appoint before the voting meeting, anyway. If we need to add this for a quick discussion with the rest of the commission.
Add that with the...
Next week, we can do that.
Next week?
Yeah. Had to keep passing the buck today, but we just don't have a full plate.
I understand, and I, I think the audience does too. So, you'd like to add this on the 16th also, or on the 23rd?
16th.
We could add it on the 16th, and then we'll know who to, what names to have on the 23rd. I don't, I mean, I don't think this discussion needs to take more than five or 10 minutes. And if you could just have us, the names and qualifications of the, or, you know, just the names and positions of the engineers you talked to, so we know who we're talking about.
Very well, okay.
And do you want to keep your name on that list too, Commissioner?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, like I said, I'm happy to do it. If we've got anybody else who wants to do it, I'd be very happy to pass it along. I've been going to the meetings, and I'll probably still attend when I can, but... Well, that does it for the agenda today. I'd be happy to entertain a motion for adjournment. Salute.
I'll second it.
Clerk, please call the board.
Mr. Hedy?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
May or Clinton, why?
Yes.
Did we just break the record? Did we? It's 59, but less...